...installed, we thank you for mayor, new commissioners, father, our alternate commissioners, still been here for awhile, and pray that you continue to bless them, father, go with them, lead, guide, and direct them, be with all city employees, father, that out working during this cold weather, doing what it takes to provide the services for us, just go with us to this meeting, let's do what is pleasing under the name of Christ, precious name, I pray.
Before we get started, I'd like to just say a few things, first of all, I'd like to introduce the new commissioners, Chris Steele, Luke Blazer, and Max, and then Susan's not new, but she's been here. And before we get started, I mean, this is my first meeting, and you know, everybody has their own different style, kind of do things, and I'm hyper, and I hope that we can bring a hyperness to our city, because I think that's what we're lacking. I'm not saying anything about anybody, past administration or anything, but if we're gonna do this job, everybody that works for the city, you're gonna have to have the energy to make this move forward, and if we can't, I mean, I think the other day, I didn't really wanna go to that meeting, the leading cities, but I would go there, our job, our only job, is to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Hazard, and I think that's our charge. Now, do we have some obstacles, do we overcome, yes, we have a lot more obstacles than people know, we need a new roof on this building, we need to renovate the pavilion, we need a roof on the pavilion, we need an air conditioner, do I have the answers to that? No, but we're gonna try to find it, but we can't find it without the help of every city employee, I think Derek told me the other day, we have 139 employees, I don't know everybody, but I'm gonna try to meet each person, and we're all on the same thing, regardless of where our kids go to school, what our kids do, what section it's in, everybody wants the same thing, we want our cities to win, and I hope that we can do it, thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Steele?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Brudon?
Here.
Mayor Mummely?
Here.
First item on the agenda, approval from the minutes, from the previous commission meeting.
Motion.
Have a motion, have a motion by committee, have a second by Susan. Then, you get that?
Thank you.
Roll call, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Blazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brudon?
Yes.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is gonna be appointing the city attorney, as you know, Mr. Collins, December meeting was his last meeting as city attorney, and he'll be a petition and petition here to take, that is all, of course, just need a motion and approval.
I'm gonna go with the first one.
Have a motion, second, roll call, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Blazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
Commissioner Brudon?
Four.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
The next item, there's gonna be appointing the mayor of the county.
I give motion for Susan Brudon to be appointed mayor of the county.
Have a motion for Susan.
Second.
Have a second for Susan, do I have any more motions? Roll call for Commissioner Brudon to be the mayor of the county, and Commissioner Steele, Commissioner Blazer, Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
You'll be the fellow, Mr. Mitchell.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Item number four, appointment of assistant city manager, I've got two gentlemen that have done a lot of work for me already, loudly been in the position for quite a while now, Tommy Arizona's working, and Tommy's gonna come in as the safety director, assistant city manager, he's working with fire department, police department, as well as handling a lot of problems here in City Oliver collection, and I'd make the recommendation that we appoint Tony as the city manager, I just need to confirm with you both, have a recommendation.
I have a motion.
Have a second, okay. Roll call, Commissioner Steele?
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Blazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
Commissioner Brudon?
Four.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Item number five, gonna be the ordinance part reading for Sunday alcohol sales, Lori?
I have included a memo regarding Sunday alcohol sales, and also, there is an existing ordinance, chapter 111, entitled alcoholic beverages. This issue has been brought before the city commission, and we have discussed it, I was asked to put this back on the agenda tonight, if you refer to the ordinance, it'll be section 111.40, and that is on page 18. This is the section in which will be changed if the commission decides to have the first reading, the first vote. Basically, here in the city of Hazard, we do not have any alcoholic beverages sold within city limits on Sundays. The Kentucky law allows alcoholic beverages to be sold on Sundays for Kentucky Reba statute, and allows an additional license fee to be paid by the establishments that want to or elect to have the Sunday sales. You do not have to elect to have Sunday sales, but in order for us to allow Sunday sales, it has to be provided for in this ordinance. If the commission decides to vote that there will be Sunday sales, there is a variety of things the commission needs to decide, besides just if sales will be on Sunday. There is an option to have all distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverage on Sunday, sold in liquor stores, or convenience stores, and restaurants, or you can limit the type of alcohol sold on Sundays, and just have beer sold on Sundays. You can limit the establishment in which it's sold on Sundays, you can state that liquor stores, convenience stores are closed, and it only be sold in restaurants, or vice versa. But I am presenting this today, it is an amendment to ordinance, chapter 111, alcoholic beverages, specifically section 11.40, which states in section A, that on a Sunday, distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages may be sold at retail in the city, and those hours are hereby established from 1:00 p.m. and before 11:00 p.m. That's another variation in which the commission can decide. It cannot be sold before 1:00 p.m., but we can have it earlier or later than 11:00 p.m. We could have it till midnight, or earlier in the evening. And then, on subsection B of the same section, I have marked out any mention of times and dates, because this section deals with polling, and it states by the amendment, that there is no sale of alcohol on polling days. So what I'm asking for the commission to date is a vote, but I would like to mention that last time we had it before the commission, there was quite a bit of discussion with the public. The city manager and I thought it was best that we bring this for a first reading tonight, and if the commission decides to pass this by vote tonight, we will have a second reading in February before it becomes law. What I suggest is that if it passes tonight, we inform the public through some sort of, or a combination of social media, website, and possibly newspaper advertisement, so the public doesn't feel like we've tried to do anything, so there will, can be a forum where people can speak about this on the second reading. Does anybody have any questions?
There were a couple other sections that kinda had strike through language, and so, I know you just mentioned kinda the hours, but there was one for caterers, and actually, I guess a fee on another paper, those also new, or had those always been there?
That is new, and that states that it's an amendment, because if a caterer, if they choose to sell on Sunday, they'll have to do it too, so I crossed that out.
Okay, so it's subject to the $300 fee as...
Correct, and it will be subject to the section of the hours and times of that.
So do we have a fixed say on the same number?
300, it's set by law, by statute.
Okay.
300 per year.
You also mentioned in kinda the memo, just a little bit of an idea of what the city of Hazard currently does.
Correct.
You talked about our flexibility to kinda structure it. As far as the difference between first reading and second reading, how much is that language allowed to change, if we were to read tonight and say, okay, whatever example you wanna choose, we will sell it packaged, but only beer, you know, or malt beverage?
You have that ability to vary, the vote in and of itself for Sunday sales...
Is Oliver...
Is what we are doing today.
Okay.
We need to decide...
How are we gonna do it after the vote is passed, right?
After today's vote is passed, you need to decide how you wanna do it, and that must be presented in the second reading.
Well, we would have to have a special vote, maybe, and we'll work together about what's in there.
If that's what you choose to do, mayor, of course. And then, from the second reading, we advertise the new ordinance in the newspaper in full with the specifics in there. So any other questions before we go to vote?
I just wanna clarify on Commissioner Mitchell's question, I believe, as we learned at the training last week, that only significant changes to an ordinance from first reading and second reading requirement go back to the drawing board.
Correct.
So I guess it just depends on what significant changes are, do you think that any of these constitute significant changes?
I think the vote in and of itself is what's important, I think that that would be a significant change in the ordinance if we allow Sunday sales or not, the specifics in which we allow it are not, you know, are something debatable. No problem.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'll make a second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, Commissioner Steele?
Yes, I'm gonna roll call my own.
That's not what we're voting on.
You're voting on if you want Sunday sales or not, and we will vote on the specifics of the hours, and the, and the, what type of alcohol and establishment, yes.
But then, nothing is concrete until the second reading.
Correct.
Just approve four.
Right.
Commissioner Dussin?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
Commissioner Brudon?
I'm staying tonight.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda, the ordinance update.
Commissioners, I have...
I'm sorry, I just wanted, the other day, the code enforcement board...
Code enforcement board, okay. The code enforcement board, there's three new members that we would like to place on the board, one as an alternate. At this point in time, during our last meeting, Trish Adams stated that she didn't have the time and could not serve on the board, so we are asking that three new members be appointed, and that in addition, we need the current members, Roy Foyham and Janie Nichols, we need to reinstate, renew their appointments. The additional members are Cindy Francis, Dee Dee Davidson, and I forget Miss Bailey's...
Bailey Richard.
Bailey Richard. Is that correct, Bailey Richard?
Peter Beal, yes.
It is Cindy Francis...
Who?
Dee Dee Davidson, and Bailey Richard.
We approach them, they all wanna do this.
I know Dee Dee wants to, Cindy Francis has been recommended, and then in our code enforcement board meeting, Bailey Richard was recommended also.
But yeah, then we will reinstate Mr. Nichols and Mr. Foyham, only Commissioner Blazer will come up, the active...
Correct.
And just Trish is second way as the option.
Yes. We need a motion to reinstate.
We need a motion to reinstate the...
Not like that motion.
Okay.
Second. Have a motion and a second for reinstatement, uh, damnation of the law, please, roll call, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
Commissioner Brudon?
Four.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
And then we need a motion, okay.
So is this what I'm saying, is this more limited to five people active board, or is there probably people who are just saying they're gonna be on the active board?
Pardon, remember active board, and then we're asking them is, it will be...
We're just replacing Mr. Mitchell as far as someone's active, I believe, two will be alternate, or...
Two will be alternate, though.
Yeah.
We're replace and move.
Are you still on the board, Kevin?
Kevin's still on the board, Roy's still...
You're on the stage.
No, his date is not yet.
I don't know how to leave now, anyway.
Yeah, and the other members are active, in attending meetings.
So we just leave the board, okay, they're active in the table?
Yes.
To them, to sort out?
We had common two alternates to begin with. We didn't designate it in the meeting, but we can, I would like to, no one stated it to me, I'd like the opportunity to talk to them in the meeting and see who's more comfortable, and then I can report to the board. So we need a motion and vote?
Motion. Have a motion?
I'll say it.
Have a second. Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Blazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Four.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Now, the item number seven, the county board in several...
The Hazard Code of ordinances, by Kentucky law, Kentucky Reba statute, needs to be updated every five years, and that is something that we have brought before the board, and I'm just asking permission that the new city attorney and I will have the authority in which to update the code of ordinances. And I would also like to mention to the commissioners, if reading through the code of ordinances, if there's any ordinance that you see and would like to update or discuss, please bring it to our attention, because during that process, if there's something of priority, we would like to provide, you know, on the top of our list. There's some ordinances that have been there since the 1940s that just don't need to be there any longer, and then we'll bring those up, just as we do normal, you know, either ordinances in our meeting, and decide whether to change or keep, and that'll be at the, you know, vote of the commission.
All of our current ordinances, are they out on that American legal website?
They are, now, there's some that...
Current, I guess, last year.
Last year, and Lyndle have anything that's happened...
But they need to be updated, right?
Oh, yes, they have not been, I mean, they have not been updated, of course, the ones that we update because of, you know, contracts we enter into, or change in law, but there's some that have not been updated in years and years. Specifically, there's an ordinance stating that we follow, as the city of Hazard, a certain employee handbook, we don't follow that employee handbook, we follow another one. It was, you know, it's something that we desperately need to change, so we're in compliance. So we just need a motion and a vote.
Will there be a process in which we approve or...
Yes.
...not approve each and every one of these?
Correct. And if there's any one that you want, you know, you can say, hey, we need to do something about this quick, or I'd like you to ask, what can I, just let us know.
So we are making a motion to approve that you all go and dive in and...
They started, and now like we don't.
Right.
Yes.
They bring us, well, yeah.
So, welcome to the committee, both in level second.
I'll make a second.
Have a motion and a second, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brudon?
Four.
Mayor Mummely?
Four.
Thank you.
Item number eight, is...
The city of Hazard has a franchise agreement with Rumkey for our solid waste collection. We entered into that agreement, I believe it was January 2016, after a bid process and a lengthy debate, and it was entered into. At this point in time, the reason I'm bringing this up, through the course of our contract, we've had one addendum, which states that Rumkey now bills and collects our commercial garbage. At this point in time, the city of Hazard bills and collects our residential garbage, the garbage bills. There has been an issue with Rumkey as to the amount of residential customers we have. They say it's a little under 1,800, that's who they're picking up every week, 1,800 customers, right around 1,797 at last count. Per our contract, we had contracted with them, we gave them in our bid instructions, a number a little less than 1,300, and then further, in our actual contract agreement, we gave them a number of, give me one moment, 1,467 customers. The issue at hand is Rumkey is stating that the city of Hazard owes them for those additional pickup, those additional customers. Our position is, we don't have a meeting of the minds between the city of Hazard and Rumkey, who's on that customer list. What Rumkey does, when they build a city of Hazard, their percentage fee, they just say, we picked up 1,797, they don't give us addresses, they don't give us names, they just give us amount of pickups. So what we've been trying to do, with the city manager, Linda Steele, is go through a list, and try to have a meeting of the minds with Rumkey, who they're picking up and the number of people. Regarding the arrears amount, the amount of money in which they want the city to pay is right around $95,000. At this point in time, I have stated to Rumkey that, you know, we're not gonna discuss that amount until we have a meeting of minds of who they're picking up, and we both, both parties understand, but it is our position that we contracted for the little under 1,500 customers, so if they pick up more, it's on them, they are the ones out in the field, they're the ones that have knowledge of who's setting out garbage cans, we don't have that knowledge. I just wanted to bring that up to the commission, because this is an ongoing issue, within the next three to four months, I'm gonna have to bring to the commission, most likely as a resolution to this issue.
Within, sorry, I don't wish to not read the contract today, and contract is quite difficult. I mean, most of the things, I may say this wrong, but we should, you think that's a place, CPI, so they have a CPI, they can, they can raise the rate every year, right?
Yeah, they can refer back to the current CPI.
They can raise the rate.
There's a tab in there.
I saw that, but I know someone called me today, and they raised the proportional rates again, but I think we do need to negotiate with them, but we're not paying them a price. I mean, I think that if they got contract, they signed all the contract, they signed this budget, and if, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just buy from the people for our, every, I mean, I think that for the food is only, to get that, and all the way you do that is by truck, and that's the only way you can do is by truck, and hand-ride, every time that they pick it up, but I mean, I think that in good faith, we should negotiate, but we're not gonna give them exactly what they say we owe.
How long if they been saying that they're being, when did they first probably approach?
Maybe giving us that number, the first time I heard about it on a conference call, I think it was in November, possibly.
Why did it take them three years to say, I'm waiting for a bigger, you know, a third floor, stuff?
There's nothing that's...
That's the scale, I mean, do they count like that apartment building, the Crossford Furniture Shop that has six cans, as separate customers, yeah, probably that guy just places one vehicle at a time, you know?
And that's, we don't have the answer to that, and that's the answer we need.
But also, we can't solve it here, but also, we're gonna negotiate with them, so we signed a contract, and we have to legally bind to that contract, but we don't have to give in to all the demands, is what I'm saying here. There were questions in the...
Lori, my question is, is how can they ask, or how can they charge without actually providing addresses? You know, I mean, if they're pulling the number out of...
We're billing the actual addresses.
Right.
So what we're billing is a lot less than the 1,797.
I'm saying what they're billing, how can they...
They're billing the city of Hazard.
Right, how can they build the city without a list of addresses of saying what they're picking up, I mean...
We have that now, we have that, but before...
They provided that.
They provided that now.
Okay, and now they're doing some kind of reconciliation.
And that is what we're working on.
I understand that.
Correct, yes, and that's what we're saying, we're not going to agree to anything until we come...
I didn't know they had provided a list.
They did, they finally did, they did in November, I believe, November.
Is there not an increase each year, that increase compared with levels of age?
Well, that's, you know, until we understand what they're picking up and what they're not, we can't even negotiate.
Well, we can't negotiate until the contract's up.
Correct, it's a part of your contract.
And everything's on the table, and I mean, and that's the only way, and I know a lot of people want us to go back to our own garbage and everything, and that's not for you or that, but really, that's what we also call analysis of everything, of what's feasible for us to do, and what protocol we have them to do it with, but I mean, yeah, 20 to 6 bucks, we should go and come up with a plan for this right.
Or, or, yeah, number of people, increase the adds of that, that's all, empty house.
And that's something too, because people could be setting a trash can out in someone else's house, and we're trying to figure all that out.
But like on...
One thing that I know of me, is I've never set a trash can out in 20 years in my house, I take it off every day when it comes to the vacuum.
Well, this...
So if they charged us for that, we take it off.
For the commissioners' information, the city of Hazard is a mandatory collection city, you have two choices, either you pay the franchisee, Rumkey, you carry it off somewhere yourself, or if you want someone else to haul it, they have to come in and get permitted, and get permission.
Well, I pay you, I have to take it off, so...
We can bill every water, because, I mean, we can bill every house.
That's how we do it.
Great.
We do it by water meter.
Great, and they don't drink, they don't go, oh, so that they made our garbage bill so I'm not gonna get our garbage this way, they don't do any of that, but I mean, that's impossible, I mean, population thing, of all that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, 300 at least.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to the potential, Derek knew about it, I knew about it, but everybody else needs to know, but we will negotiate.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like one question about that, would the commissioners like to be included on our emails to Rumkey?
Yes, please.
Okay. I believe that's all.
They've got somebody, number nine, sign ordinance review?
In the month of December, I brought a memo and a sample ordinance to the commissioners' attention. The reason why the sign ordinance came to the top of the pile, is there is a company that wants to put a sign on an 80 across from, you know, where Clutz Auto is, and they need to have a active city sign ordinance. When I started examining this, I saw it was a lot more in-depth than just saying, hey, let's put some signs up. So I gave the commission a brief memo and a sample ordinance that talks about signs in the city of Hazard, because it becomes part of, you know, a zoning issue and an appearance issue with the city of Hazard, and how the commission envisioned the city, and how the city will look in the future, and so this is for informational purposes at this point in time, and in the very near future, we need to discuss and enact a sign ordinance that encompasses what the commission believes, you know, the parameters of signs in the city of Hazard.
If we discuss this, can we discuss the purpose of that too?
Would we, we have...
Can we bring through by one time?
Correct.
But we're all politicians.
Right.
Some of us have to put signs up. Okay.
I mean, we just gotta put everything on the table.
That's correct, because there was, Commissioner Bryan at the time stated that the signs in the intersections, where it's on public property, not private property, that would be inclusive in here, where... be inclusive in here, where, you know, if it can or cannot be, and the penalties, I believe the penalties for the majority in violation of this ordinance would go in front of the total force of court.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of these from what I could tell.
Do you see a motion to move forward on this?
I don't even need a motion.
I'd add a question about, at one point, it references a side triangle, do you know what a side triangle is?
I'm not, I can tell you what I think it is from statute.
Because I think where Clutz is, pretty close to the intersection of, how I mean-
Correct, and it's, you know, if you have-
But on that, on that same, I don't, on that same thing, you know, signs, they might want to do this, but it can be different with the signs, they've done primary care.
But there's a grandfather period, that can be grandfathered in, and it's a different type of bro, you know, eighty and fifteen.
Yeah, I know, but I talk about this, the same, you know, type of sign.
It's an electronic sign, right, it is electronic sign.
I think it's just going to be near the Clutz property, I don't think actually Clutz wants to do it.
No, that, that part matters.
The site company actually called the other day asking about where we were at on this, and I told them we were going to discuss it again. It's actually right next to somebody Hall.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, of this.
Do they give them permission? Do they get permission?
I'm sorry, and if they're negotiating.
That's all part of the state permit process, they have to have the ordinance, they have to have the movement, I mean, it's, yeah. But that's all I have with the sign, I just want, would like the commission to be familiar with this sample ordinance, and we can discuss it further.
Item number nine, the sign worth nine hundred and ten is a session over the rubbish truck. Rush trucks, the, the not stable garbage truck, dump truck, that we've had on the road several years, we'd like to bring it back into everyday use, setting it up to go out for sale, run different routes in the city.
I like that.
We still have those.
Same, let me, let me talk to people like you were saying about the rubbish truck. We have a little truck right now that drives around every morning, because I'm out every morning, and it's a pickup truck. But here's what I found, I talked to everybody, and it wasn't campaigning, it just talked to the people. That rubbish truck, really important to keep our city planning, because it can come by, we have a route, and we put the route in paper, and you can put your couch out there, you put the mattress out there, we're not going to charge, it's a service from the city to the people, and the majority of people are here to pay, to have it removed. But, and I would say, Susan, protect those ladies at the Franchise Shop, you know, if they have to throw mattresses away, or just don't get them hospital, they, they're not going to pay you forty dollars to do that.
With the mortgage, huh?
Which would be really hard. And number two, and I'm not saying that they live, but we've driven around, we've found several couches on out avenues, up in low there, mattresses and stuff, they're going to get rid of us. I think that we should find a board that's a city, the rubbish truck out there, and we're not going to do it if you rewater your home. I mean, you can pay for that, cut all your trees down, forty-six hundred dollars a land, you're going to pay to have it hauled off, but just the general population, I think, within a month's time, we'll see an improvement in the city, I think, and if you got the rubbish truck, like, what, tell me what we're talking about. If it goes up, what street, I don't call streets now, the old bypass, World Drive, it's the old bypass, I mean, it's always the bypass. But if that garbage is by those apartments, and it's not time for Rumkey, can't we stop that rubbish truck there and throw it in there? And that way, first time somebody comes into town, they won't see that. And if it runs every day, there should never be garbage there, there should never be garbage down by the fire park on that day, I mean, those people have been nice, moved it, but we're still guarding. But I think, you know, that's one of the biggest complaints we've had ever since we've had the Rumkey contract, is cities dirty, we don't pick up garbage once a week. I think we, as a commission, and as a city, we need to put this rubbish truck back on for people, and we've got five containers to take it off, and we've got it right now. The county judge is putting the bill for us, anything we pick up, we take it up to Scotts, and they're paying to have it hauled off, and that's not fair. I mean-
We could either pay them or stand for it.
We appreciate it, but the fact is, we need to offer that service ourselves for our people, that's why.
And Rumkey's has, or supposed to have, a dumpster up at the maintenance garage, as-
Has it got some wheels on it?
I don't know.
We need a dumpster with wheels.
Well, we need, they're supposed, as a courtesy, you know, that was one of the things, with black gold, with-
That was in the contract.
Yeah, that's in the contract.
I mean, they're called, we need to pull with wheels so we can haul.
The next big thing is, people are-
But we have to pull on this right here, we'll put it on a thing, and we need to put it on the road.
And we need a schedule printing out on the water bills, or whatever, can you come out on the water bills, man? Because people let me, because they come in the store, they don't get my garbage truck all night.
I know, if SGS, I could go to SGS and tell them, I mean, I couldn't do that, or Derek could, or Carlos could, or, I'm not supposed to talk about that rubbish truck. But I just think that I do, and I think it will help our town, certainly.
And in our business, it's going to be the action. Now, my collection, we have a schedule of the rubbish truck.
They have a lot of same rubbish truck, second.
Have motion, I understand.
Yes, same people, that's right.
This helps us continue to develop the river and the art greenway as a place to draw people in, and yes.
Four.
I think four. I think four. Item number eleven, discussion of the water rates with the city. In fact, we're finding eastern, second water district, current water rates. We've also been approached by the state, telling us that our water rate is hard to vote. In order for us to continue receiving these state grants and state funding for the water system, somewhere down the road, we're going to have to vote at raising the water rates to go free of the legislature. If you look at the scale there, the hazard in city rate, per two thousand gallons right now, we're turning on base ten sixty-two.
If you look at all the other cities.
The Clutz system.
I'm going to say eighteen, I don't know if y'all have that up here, but electric, electric gas twenty-seven, bark catch thirty-three, uh, rest of the quarter twenty-two, mountain water district, that's another, twenty-three.
We're up to five dollars cheaper.
Will this, how much will this affect the-
The only one opposed to us pays for, and it's almost sixteen, it's not six dollars.
How much will this affect the normal basic usage?
It's one of the three per period.
It'll be a phase-in process when we do get down to it, but it's depending upon what we determine that the rate needs to go up. I mean, even if you look over the four thousand, I mean, we're twenty-fourty-three for four thousand gallons, approximately fifty percent of our customers are only using base two thousand gallon truck now. Your in-city customers will have a little bit higher because of the sewage as well, but it's not in terms of water, just the sewage.
Just before you have a question here.
Yes, sir.
What's the sewer charge?
It would go up just depending upon your use for it. The only way that it goes up is if you use over that two thousand, would be your increase in the sewage rate, but your sewage is based off how much water that-
Sewer charge, what, ninety percent, man, a hundred percent?
I'm sorry?
Was the sewer charge a hundred or ninety percent?
I think it's ninety-three, I believe, for you.
Will this generate money if we can use and keep the roof being hot?
Would you put twenty percent, like a twenty percent into the-
Ten percent, yeah, ten percent is served, ten percent in the water.
But if you raise the rate, you could maybe eleven percent, eleven percent.
I'm saying, that might heal, but there is some of our water.
Ten percent is everything that comes in from our bill, from the water, totally water, it pays off our bill of water, it's ten percent of that cost.
We're on the bill, we have, that we can-
Water, water, sewer, sewer's dirty. But it handles every, they have to pay off the losses, if there are going to be lumps that the city has for these waters, for thirty years.
I'll make you ready for that, I mean, I plan to go up this to the table, we're going to be studying this for a month, and bring it back in February, and see what we stand.
And what is our, what is our rate that's not in city? Our minimum?
It's really not supposed to be the same. And that's something we have to look at, what, what's that rate you can go up to? We've been looking, and we're still continuing to look right now, on how much it costs us to produce a thousand gallons of water, and you have to consider what it costs to produce a thousand gallons here within city, it's a lot different, the more it takes for Butler, or the left, and the double, and the additional electrical fees for every pump station that goes through. Chemical rates right now vary, we're on a plus-weighting market on how much it costs us for the chemicals to treat our water. There's a lot of different variables that we have to-
I talked to a guy that leads the cities about water rates, and he said, sorry, listen.
Of this list that you provided, which one of these water systems closely mirrors what we have as far as the number of customers that we have, and-
I can pull, I've got those, I'll lay down.
Not me, because we're one of two cities that have the entire county, a lot of times the city just has inside their county, been city within. We have the entire county.
So, it's not, it would not be very comparable?
We don't have, South area has Big Oak, as well as the City of Butler, which only has approximately two hundred customers, in about, in front of Village of Butler.
Sure, sure. So, so these votes are not, are not going to be very comparable as far as the usage and the number of customers?
The fact that the mountain water district would probably be higher than us, most of the others are going to be lower than us. We have approximately about nine thousand total in that area.
And what is the breakdown between in-city and out-of-city of that nine, roughly?
It's like two more, I mean, you know.
And that's something we can work, the girls have been pouring a lot of reports out on this, but again, this is going to be mandated from the state. It's going to be a point where we don't have that option, we want any more state dollars, state grants, federal grants, we're going to have to come up with what they're telling.
And what, and what are they kind of throwing in?
They're-
Of course, they aren't going to set it for us, unless they're Martin County, before all, they'll be setting it for the county, but, yeah.
The state from Martin County have like ten dollars, no, clean, it hasn't happened.
But, we will. You need a motion to study that, but you'll need a motion to study that.
This is just an informational, for you all to know, this is something that we have to look at, and we're going to have to consider, and, I mean, if you walk into a nice commission seat, there's a lot of decisions that are actually made for the future hazards, and how we're going to do it. But I will work on the breakdown, the point before we have Steve and Kim, and we'll get that.
No, I can mention a question, could you bring to us what's going to happen with this addition when we come in?
Absolutely, and I can tell you immediately, that you see it all the time, we've got things that can be reinvented in our water.
Right.
Huge reinvention, I mean, you have water plants that were built in the forties, they have that a big couple of times.
Right, we have, what water plant, if it goes out, we're out.
Yes, and it's, we still work on these funding sources, which will open, but every funding source has a minimum, well, down to twenty percent package, so we have forty percent, at least whenever we go out there now, that has to come from local.
And I'd also, since we're talking about water, and I said this time and time again, if you live out the county, we're glad that we can get city water too, but if you have had a will at any time, I would keep that little active, because when the water does go off, you have an alternative source of water, and, but, that's just making. They didn't make it for the ones you can keep, most of the people are cut off, but it doesn't taste, but that one tool, whatever I want, I mean, just to get it back on, I mean, you might not be able to drink, you can bottle water, but you, plus you told that you can do other stuff with it. But, that would help, and we've been lucky, Jamie, where's what, twenty seconds?
Any other questions on our water, or water rates?
Right.
Again, we will continue to build this information, we'll bring it to you all for that, but it is something that we definitely need to look at, and have to do with that period.
Also, since we're talking about water, to everybody, I said, Derek and I met with a company out of pocket the other day, and we can't necessarily do water audits, because we don't have the money, we don't have any money, but we're going to be looking at education, so we're really trying to have, and they've opened in, and because they're a proud company, but I know they helped Scott, who's, and I know they helped a bunch of people with Jesus, a bunch of people with Bible, but we're not selling our water, we're trying to get as much help as we can possibly get to figure out, first of all, water problems, and what tools we need to make it work, and if he can find that, I mean, we're just spinning in the mud.
I mean, this is something, we mentioned the meters, while we've been discussing a few companies, but the meters that we currently have are in the end of their service line, they've got, the other day-
And that's one point, that billion dollars of the meters that we did, we know that. I've got to tell you, that one, I've got the screen that has, I'm like, the meters, which has that long to do that.
A lot of what they did is about the water, and I'll put the gas out there, I think the gas is not far behind in the meters that we're, they're phasing out those models, and they've already told us the meter companies, which are bad, who are current users, they won't sell us a new model to buy the same design. We're having to move to these, which also is going to cause us to have to enter a lot of our, the business.
And that's going to be the same thing with every city, if you, if you deal with technology, it's going to be, I think, that you, that seven-five-seven area, technology is much going to be optimized, and that's what's going to happen, and we have to plan a quarter.
Not to be a question, or any of this, what is it?
Oh, my God, you know, I mean, if the rate goes up, it's one point, those places, I tell you that, one point they figure it out.
Item number twelve, on the new agenda, discussion of the strategic plan, and I'm going to pick Betsy's name, since she's sitting back there. We applied for a grant, and we applied to a project from the lead cities to a strategic assessment that the city had, to give us a base plan to begin with. Betsy pursued some initial funding to pay for this, and you were awarded it.
Fifteen thousand dollars through the Perry County Foundation, so we're excited, I think Luke, no, Luke, Debbie, Max, that's already met with the lead cities when they were in that training last week.
We have a post official meeting before the sixth.
Yes, and then the meetings will open up to the public, and it's like a six or seven month project, but we're all really excited to finally get to plan a plan, to get some of these things done, and we've been working on it for a long time on every meeting.
And it's almost like a school plan, a comprehensive group of plans, it's, it's a real match for the city to boss.
That public meeting is tentatively set for the end of March, so please be there, and please, use your connections, we have people to be there.
There'll be a, there'll be a Facebook event, right?
And then so.
And a lot of y'all, we want to be, want to be late on that, too.
Does nobody, happy to bring me back the strategic comparison book, that it, you guys have to see a few other, do you?
Only I have Jamie and Preston Bergen, love, and I think it's very worth it, and it's a really cool mag, magazine, that's really well promoted, I didn't bring Jenkins back, because I've been up there, Jenkins, and I didn't see all that stuff they did. I mean, I think if we put it in that book, we need to put it on the street.
Item number thirteen, if you still need support, we are always on board. With water, we build three land, one sixty-nine, sixty-two, collected two seventy-seven, three eighty-nine, seventy-five. With sewer, we build one fifteen, seven eighty-eight, pleasant one twenty, oh fifty-five, fifteen. Gas, we build two sixty, three oh seven, twenty-six, collected one twenty-four, one thirty-four, seventy-seven. Garbage, build twenty-four, nine sixteen, forty-six, collected twenty-two, seven twenty-seven, seventy-five. Any questions? Molly, do you have a report?
Do you have, got a piece of cement on the handle of this thing, on the handle of water, with thirty-four, thirty-one, thirty-four, and seven percent breaks?
It's holding thirty-four percent, thirty-one percent, and seven percent breakers. We use two percent back on part of the park, which is twenty-two thousand, I'm saying. We've had several mainline breaks, had some troubles with water lanes. It's iffy on.
So exactly the same as the water.
One of the things that Wiley has been recommending, we've gone back to a night committering there. And this is helping us, Mr. Steele, I've heard about being able to locate these things better besides us having to get out in the drive and looking at this one. Wiley definitely looks at your night committer, I've always found a couple sent from those night committers calling high usage in specific areas. And that gives them, it doesn't tell exactly where an outbreak is, but it puts them into an accident area.
One thing that I would recommend, and I mean, I want you to, because you're busy as a day, but if you could sit down with him one at a time for like fifteen minutes. I mean, and just listen, you'll get a better grasp of what he's talking about than you grasp of it. Because I don't comprehend six inches of vein and all that type of stuff. But he explained it to me the other day and I don't know more about the water than you on it, but it makes sense. And we've got a plan for about getting more intake into the plant. And the main thing about the plan, and I'm not going to take it too hard.
Your line?
We've got to figure out a way to do, for we shut the plant down.
That's what?
Let it rest. I mean, not have two hours a day, it used to be six or eight, and we need to get somewhere in the middle where we can shut it down four hours a day, every day. And then because regardless of what we're going to do, we say, if that plant goes down, we don't have a break.
That's what?
I have watched more time on the weather channel and watched more weather apps on my phone for the last three months for preparing. These weather incidents, and I brag on the water guys, they're out there in all these conditions, they're out there, but they all know they've been working. The guys at the water plant are pumping twenty-four seven, three sixty-five running. We boosted every one of our tanks to almost back from capacity to try to prepare for these leaks. We split our guys into two teams, we're working on these leaks, we're splitting in different areas if we have a problem.
I don't know if they've talked to y'all about this, that one just has nothing to do with the meeting or anything like that. But we talked, Derek and I talked, Paul talked today about all these guys we know who are going to be out on that hall. It's somehow that we, I mean, we have keys sitting off that we could, you know, during the day, but we have proof here all out on them. So, you know, we know that our rate, I mean, the hourly wage is not great, but if we want to work out there three, four, five days in a row, the least we could do is provide food. And I'm not talking about just water, only gas, fire, sleep, anybody that's moving around the block to make people's lives better, we all speak.
I would very appreciate that.
And if we do that, I gotta find money to fix his kitchen. It needs fixed.
It's, it's. It's for the master manager, he's going to take me to the field for three months to get established free of what I look very healthy like to compare to.
And when you all enter these things, well, you know what things will drop.
That's what. I would be scared of probably a hundred times.
Yeah, that's what I thought of that, was more wanting to feel it, but great. I'm just gonna make sure I was right.
In past meetings, you talked about when leaks been caused by construction, you know, and the efforts and struggles on building, collecting, where do you stand on those formally? I know it's a small percentage of all.
Wouldn't you like for me to reference there, I can quote him, I've heard so many times.
I would watch it.
Not our fault.
Not our fault.
Do you realize that today, just the day of August, we have to put the hospital on emergency gas for public construction because we keep to the line? I mean, and, and the thing is, you know, you can't argue with progress, we need to run. I mean, but we gotta work together, they knock the gas off the hospitals, we gotta get it on, we can't live separate lines, we gotta get them fixed, because I mean, and we just don't. And that's why.
And that was gonna be my follow-up, is we have unfortunately, the previous, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the previous people that maintained our Facebook feed were police officers that are no longer within the city. So what is our plan or what is the plan for whether it be social media or just media in general and keeping people aware of water situations as they do arise? You know, we know who's responsible for that.
One of the young ladies downstairs is taking over the Facebook feed, she's doing all the water advisory anytime we can have that out. We've also utilized the mailings that we do with the bills, we put the emergency number in there, they can call in, it's monitored twenty-four seven. We have it here in City Hall during the day, it goes to the water plant at night, so the operators of the water plant keep it on, you can call in through that at any time. And for that, if possible.
Is that on our website, the emergency number? Where is it featured?
It goes through the feed on the webpage.
On the kind of banner on the box?
All handles, handles the webpage.
And he still, but he still contracted to do that.
But it's on the main banner? Is it code red?
No, code red is a notification that we can send out to you. And it's something Wiley also looked at this past week, there's an app that you can get for your phone. If you want to monitor the city ladder and every feed that comes out, it would go to your phone app. It would be used down there to water for water advisory, any specific area.
And I realize everybody in this room is really going to have to take off. And we also leave, we're going to W S U S, our radio station for me. And a person that doesn't use all the technology, because I mean, for grandchildren, eight, five years old, I mean, we need that. And it's public service now, it's a revenue stream.
It goes out to W S U S, we do the facts, it goes to W S U S, it goes to every water state, it also goes to their local water service. But it feeds to all of those.
And that's also the lead of last year's draft.
A lot of people are killing on that, more than service. But thank you, Mr. Steele.
Well, then there's the radio station, which like.
These go to the big brands.
Radios make things, I mean.
Yeah, but anytime that we do have pool water, it does automatically go out. Those are public service announcements, we've looked at as well, giving them notifications of the leaks in certain areas to avoid it becomes a traffic.
Another thing that y'all, y'all realize, but I don't dig, since last year, how many meetings have you had with Buckhorn?
With all everybody.
Preparing for this year, this is what we, I mean, it may not work, but they have a plan. And also Buckhorn tried to give us the water system. And we can't, we don't have the manpower to take that. I mean, that's, I mean, I hate to say it, we can't, I mean, we're having a hard time with what we got.
We've set down, Buckhorn Water System has been pulled into, the South Perry Water System has set in, we didn't serve well. We want everybody to know where we're at, how we're standing. Buckhorn had a leak a few weeks ago, we ended up having to shut it off, they just didn't have the bulk of the bike over the top. So we even worked with them, finally helped them on that portion of their way.
And we need to keep pushing our state represented incentives to get there next.
Their next would be huge for it, huge.
Have you mentioned someone out there, some on social media, you know who that is?
You just take a.
I don't like them.
Yeah, you definitely don't like them.
Any other questions on the utility report? This is Fire Department report. Honorable Mayor's information, City Manager, I had Fire Department responding to forty-nine calls through the monthly sampling. Station one had twenty-eight fire calls, station two had five. Station one had seven rescue calls, station two had nine. Other activities including attending Perry County Mercy Management meeting, attended fire commission meeting in Lacey, attended mannequin gas, possibly here at City Hall. Continued to work on building pre-plans for all businesses, held mountain firefighters meeting at Area Four Zero Training Center. Attended Mercy Management meeting in L R H, involved area Fire Department's youth program, twenty-two thousand young ones. Be assisted with Christmas parade and held birthday and charity chili cook-off. Hosted children from Hazard Middle School, they done a shop for the firefighter. H F C gas installed today. Hundred-one smoke detectors and gave out five hundred sixteen detectors to county departments. We also received their I S O results and all had the Fire Department's temperature areas now three. That's not just the city, that's anywhere we go. Everybody's insurance can make a pull today, I don't know why they did that, but we'll, we'll premium soon go back.
Right, like they wish them waiting on the flood, right?
Also happy you're up. Twenty eighteen year review, I'll just kind of touch on a few things. First, last year, fire calls were four hundred thirty, EMS calls were two ninety-nine, health calls for twenty eighteen were seven hundred twenty-nine. Actual fire calls were ninety-five, hazardous condition calls were sixty-one, service calls left, alarm calls were two hundred. Station one had two hundred and sixty of those fire calls, station two had hundred and seventy. Station one had a hundred fifty-three of the EMS calls, station two had a hundred forty-six. Total run volume has increased five point two percent since twenty seventeen. Station one responded sixty percent of total calls, station two responded forty percent of total calls. Six percent of station one's when we're outside the city limits, and eight percent of station two's we're outside the city. The average response time was four minutes and thirty-six, that's nineteen seconds slower than twenty seventeen due to construction, things like that.
You're just getting straight. Just nineteen seconds, that's good.
It also depends on the areas we respond to, the community areas we have to go to have, and it's all captured earlier into it. Most fire calls occurred in January, most fires were on the east. Most fires for both stations, third and eighth, and other areas, forty-five percent of all fire calls were residential. Sixty-four point nine percent of EMS calls were motor vehicle collisions with injuries, and every turnout for hauling sent to six percent. During the calendar year twenty eighteen, we diverted five thousand five hundred four point five hours of train. This allows the department to maintain house to state regions for all instances of the fire.
As someone who received one of those, one of the alarms, thank you and thank you back.
We still have planning, so pretty good work.
How do you pull that, I mean, probably as the chief.
Remove the interim chief.
Les has been the interim chief since I came to City Hall, he's done an excellent job, as well as with us and staff, I gotta commend Les, and all the guys at the Fire Department.
That's great, yeah.
When I came down here, we actually lost seventy-four years of service at the Fire Department amongst myself, Sam Stacey, and Brad Smith for repair. They've done a great job, and I missed the beat, the I S O rating, the class three I S O rating, and the standard. I mean, we held a class four for years, just hell of it. They moved it down to a five three and they're only at three points. It was three point, four point away from being a two. They're only thirty, thirty-four, huh?
Thirty-four hundred, five three.
Was it a just about subtraction from Derek that really kind of carried your attention on that?
That boost.
That's what it did.
I'll say that motion.
I have a motion from the mayor, I have a statement from Commissioner Steele, and Senator Mayor Spencer.
Last person here.
Ladies and reporters, so she's got two, well, about Commissioner Steele, Commissioner vice.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner President, Mayor Mumbly.
Thank you.
Step over to the police department, who reports back from Chief Allen.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. Monthly report for the leak center two thousand eighteen is paused. We had one thousand three hundred fifty-seven calls for service, one hundred fifty-six motor assist, eighty-four business escorts, four hundred eleven extra patrols, seventy-one alarm responses, fifty accidents. Issued a total of one hundred forty-two citations, stole arrests for ninety-four, called excites forty-eight, twenty-two were felony, fifty-seven misdemeanors, drug or drug related, thirty-three warrants served, and forty-one traffic violations, two DUI related arrests. Criminal case activity, we had a total of twenty-seven criminal cases, eighteen were felonies, eight were misdemeanors, one was for other, we had a total of three thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents stolen, recovered three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Our accident activity, as I said earlier, we had fifty accidents, three were injury producing, forty-seven was non-injury, no fatal. Those DUI related crashes, seven citations were issued during the. Some of the monthly highlights for the police department, at the Christmas parade, no incidents. At Christmas in a small town, I showed you down Main Street, no incidents. After the parade of lights. And the kids, with our saturation of neighborhoods with our residential check forms.
He's been on residential check forms before.
I've got all kinds of compliments of that to explain.
Thank you all.
Basically what.
First one I heard was from the roommate, is that partners went to their house.
What it is basically is a little card that we can check a business or a residence or whatever, anytime during the night. And a lot of people will say, well, I've never seen the place or whatever, so we take that card down, we slide the mailbox or in the door or whatever, and they can see that place has been there. Officer such and such kept your residential real business at such and such area, and everything is okay. It's a community place.
They not going to.
I think that's great, and with this really bad weather coming, it will come with a killing of war, especially above people shooting, and they're telling people to knock until they answer.
Right.
See, and then plenty of groceries, whatever, I mean, I don't mind.
Also, I'll cover our two thousand eighteen annual report, I'll briefly highlight that. Total number of calls for service was thirteen thousand two hundred two, we had two thousand seventy-six motor assist, one thousand forty business escorts, one thousand one hundred ninety-five extra patrols, and seven hundred twenty-two alarm responses. We issued a total of two thousand fifty-five citations, twelve hundred eighty-seven were recent. Total cited was eight hundred fifty-three, two hundred four for felonies, thirty-eight for misdemeanors, three hundred twenty-nine drug related, four hundred eighty-nine warrants served, seven hundred twenty-three traffic related, twenty-eight DUI arrests, and one hundred thirteen parking citations. Criminal case activity was a total of three hundred fifteen criminal cases, one hundred eighty-five were felonies, one hundred seventeen for misdemeanors, fourteen were for other, we had a total of four hundred three thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents stolen, recovered one hundred forty-three thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Our accident activity, a total of six hundred four accidents, ninety-four were injury producing, five hundred ten were non-injury producing, one fatal accident, eleven DUI related accidents, and sixty-one citations related to those accidents. If you look on the next page, this is a yearly comparison of all the activities that we've just described. As you can see, our citations have went down probably close to three thousand citations since two thousand twelve. Our DUI arrests have went drastically down from two thousand twelve. This is, as a result, I think, you know, the majority of DUIs now are not accident, not alcohol related type DUIs anymore. Also, a lot of these, you know, it's just, we're slipping through the cracks, or we're not catching the ones doing this kind of stuff the way we used to. Our open cases has drastically went down by almost two hundred, our collisions have went down by a hundred, our calls for services drastically went down, I mean, just population wise or what.
Decreased the population.
Yeah, decreased the population. So if you look on that back page, that'll highlight a lot of the different things that we've done during the past year. We've lost quite a few officers, we barred quite a few officers, and promoted some. I'll let you all do that, but I don't want you to dig that all, all of that. We've had a very productive year, I think we're on a good building program right now as far as getting everybody trained. I've got two that graduate next week, that's Jimmy Perkins and J J McGomrie, that will graduate from the academy, I'll be looking forward to having them back. That's definitely going to help us as far as the manpower, we've got four leaving, first of February to the academy for two weeks. The other four will start in May, so that should be. Trial officers?
If anyone's saying how many do you have useful rock name?
Certified, we only have six or seven certified.
Well, we do that for them, that's why we hire so many of them, but they, I mean, that's why we stagger and shift.
And we're using them, we're aiming to use them because, I mean, we partner up with certified officers, and they can do, you know, work accidents and minor things. Four. Four.
That's a lot, that's huge for.
It is huge. One of the things is the new station's come on pretty good, all the drywall is done upstairs and downstairs. And I spoke to Carlos Conger, the way down here, he told me that, he will tell you, we'll paint inside that building red and gray.
It's kind of Hollywood, it seemed like this time last year, I think it's back to Commissioner Forman to ask you on the DUI, how many were alcohol related, you said zero, or the seventy-four? Is that, is that, is that to where we are on the twenty-eight as well?
Yeah, and then, you know, there's some other stuff that's going on in Perry County as far as the way they prosecute DUIs now too. It's no, we use implied consent cards and all that, and now they're having different types of hearing. It's the only place in the state of Kentucky that I know of that, that does that, that's called. Parksville hearing. You know, why that's happening, I have no idea, but you know, as far as convictions of DUIs, I don't think we're getting any. Right now, the cost is, they're actually requiring us to.
That's the court.
That's the court.
And for the uninitiated, you said you have six or seven roughly on patrol, now what is your target number of officers on?
Nine eight, yeah. Nine eight, so time to get these others, the ten to graduates, and then we'll have eight more, so we'll be back up close with that number, of course, we've got two school resource officers now, so.
Is that, not even five, six, or seven throughout the year, but is that also possible, as I've been kind of referencing, with the turnover you've had, or people that, that would also lead to dropping citations and not having the manpower to be out of that?
It is, that's, that's probably the biggest reason, because you know, really, these new guys right now, I've not allowed them to do a lot of that kind of stuff, just because a lot of people, you know, we let them arrest on warrants and that kind of stuff. Because, and that's a given, they're going to be arrested on that, but as far as them initiating anything, then no, we don't allow them to do that. Unless they're with an officer, the officer, the certified officer, usually can carry the criminal case, we're pretty much gutting them guys right now, as far as, you know, what we got left. But by September, we already back up to a hundred percent, hundred percent training in dispatch and program.
I'd like to thank you all personally, you know, wherever, we're giving, all of, giving yourself numbers out, if there's a problem, call. I appreciate that.
It's part of the.
I appreciate it. We've been talking with Dick and Sheriff, you, James, I, I mean, I appreciate that, I appreciate you all. Put the whole town, that's back in the whole town.
Like, before we go into the session, I forgot this article, I put Carol Day's head something she wanted to say.
We might even see it all.
I need to see that part. It's a back, I couldn't see.
Oh, sorry, well, I just wanted to say thank you, I went through the pavilion this week and I noticed how cleaned up it was. And we had the worker release crowd there, it was like, and they were cleaning the bathrooms. And so I had an idea I just wanted to bring up as a community, this kind of, this amazing group of public servants. I'm thinking, what if we were doing something for the people in worker release or drug court or, so that when we bring people out and they do a public service, whether it's cleaning or whatever, that maybe we could teach some job skills to them or have, one of the things I noticed was that pavilion needs to be painted. And so I thought, well, you know, what if we could have somebody from some organization or a really great leader in the community who knows how to paint professionally, teach people who are on worker release so that they could have some job skills and have something that when they're looking better and finishing whatever their time is, that they could go out and have some job skills that they might not have had, instead of just cleaning, and you're all like that, then there's a little bit of pride and, you know, a sense of, I can get help before. Anyway, I thought that, and then maybe that even we can have the community to help sponsor, because I was thinking, I would help pay, they have a piece of the pavilion in better shape, I would pay to have that bathroom painted. If somebody, and then people are learning skills, maybe we could ask the community to support that. So it's kind of an idea, a few ideas, but mostly, I think the most important one is that if we can teach job skills, we will try and improve our lives.
I think that's a great idea, but, and I think that, because we get the worker release to the county, so it's going to have to be a joint.
And that's another part.
For us in the county, we're going to be trying to figure out, and I don't have a problem with that, I think it'd be great.
Well, I saw.
And I'll help paint it too, I mean, I'll paint out a firework.
Yeah, but it needs to be done professionally, I can't.
Can't paint it.
I would die, you know, you get some community partners and, and you know, do it, improve an asset that we already own, it'd be great, and it'd be a good way a lot of them approach me.
So we appreciate you, Tom, will you be in charge of the, get the paint pavilion? I'll be on the chair. She's about a lot of them.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Eric.
Jobs, and I get gritted for that, work force and stuff. Nowhere is.
I just, I'm trying to, this time I make the motion that we go into each session.
That motion, I would say, committee annual, which, 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 or, which, President, or.
And we're not going to go back, Allison, because I'm thinking, great news is discussion, so if you want to stay, you're welcome.
They've been denied, it's been informed, people are great tonight, a bit of this people had been informed, you know, it's like.
Thank you, Mr. Forman.
You did a great job, I know it, you speak to me.